You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the September 13th, 2022 meeting of the Mission and Assures Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
All right, we're just waiting for John to get back in here, but I think I'm going to call the meeting to order. So I will ask everyone to stand in beside the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. Um, let's see, seven more. Thank you. Okay. John, should I start the roll call or do you want to? Okay. Okay, yes, okay. Did you forget about it? President Diad Edwards?
Present.
Vice President Michael Martinez?
Present.
Ralph Box?
Present.
Rich Young? So far, he's not here. I'm here. Fire Chief Gary Bendix? Absent. Police Chief Marcus Twistick?
Present.
Code Enforcement Officer Devin Chell?
Here.
Flood Plate Administrator Ray Douglas?
Absent. You missed Dolly.
Advisory Plan Commission President Ralph Bostrom, he's here. Website's Matt Vaughn? Absent. And Road Commissioner Bob Zopowski, he's here.
Okay, you missed Dolly Miller and Matt Vaughn.
Oh, Matt Vaughn?
Absent.
He's obviously absent.
And Dolly Miller.
And what?
Dolly Miller, you missed Dolly.
Oh, sorry, Dolly. First Board President Dolly, uh, Hart Board President Dolly Miller.
Here, sir.
Okay.
Okay. All right, and Rich is here.
I just marked you absent.
Okay, I'm going to...
I just showed up.
I am going to move on to adopting the meeting agenda. So at this point, I would like to ask for any additions or corrections, and I will tell you some, I made a couple of changes here, so.
Is this the third addition?
The second one was sent out midday today, and then this, the third one is only sent out to those in the, who give reports. So this would be my changes for this evening, yes, so this is new. Under seven, C, I would like to add C, and it is a report regarding the open position in town.
The council seat?
Yes, the council seat, yes, the report on that, okay. Then eight, under eight, we are going to remove what is existing there for E, the proposal regarding changing the title for the building commissioner, and take that off for this month, and instead, we're going to introduce the electronic meeting policy, the need to set that up, so that's going to be added, electronic meeting policy instead of the building commissioner. That will take place the next month. The second page, I believe that's it, I have made the changes in the, in the agenda you had gotten earlier. Do you have the one that included the Baker Tilly review? John, does yours say that?
Right, except I just thought I asked you to have it at the beginning.
Well, it is, it's right there.
Okay.
It's right after this now, it comes, it's number four.
Okay.
Okay? You know, right, number four, so.
I have new business highlighted, moving outside of the 3627.
Yes, but that's, yeah, that's already changed on this one, so. And you would have gotten a copy of this one, I had sent you a copy of this one earlier today.
I just, I emailed, I didn't see anything when I came in at five.
Yeah. Well, it was from earlier today, so. Okay, yeah, this morning, sometime I send it out to everybody, not, no.
So that's been taken off?
No, no, that is there.
Okay.
All of those are there, those were additions that were made to the original, so this is the edited version.
Okay, and on 13, both of those were highlighted.
Yes, they were, because both of those are added.
Okay, that's what was added.
Okay, thank you.
I have no more comments.
Okay. All right, Rich and Michael, nothing? How about Rich? Anything for the agenda? Okay, then I need a motion to accept the agenda as it was changed now, adjusted. Okay, Ralph Box?
Second.
All right, Ralph Box moved, Michael Martinez seconded to accept the meeting agenda with the addition and change. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, so we move on right now into the budget review with Baker Tilly.
Thank you very much. My name is Susan Cowan, I'm a senior manager with Baker Tilly in Indianapolis. We have been here for the past couple of years, we sort of did this remotely last year due to COVID, and then we know it's possibly one of my colleagues have been here representing us before. Oh, sure. Sure, okay. So it's my pleasure to be here for the first time, I have been to the Mission and Assures report, so it's best to be here finally. But what I have brought for you this evening is, first of all, some sort of summary preliminary head level information on the budget. There, in further into the document is some detail, but I am not going to go over that detail necessarily tonight. That's individual discussion, for if you was a council, you need to discuss that and make any changes to your budget. What we're focusing on tonight is that this is a public hearing for your budget this evening, and this is sort of the first reading introduction of your budget as it's been submitted on Gateway, and then at your next meeting, you would then choose to adopt the budget as is currently, or you can make changes to the budget either that night or ahead of time, which is, you know, you can go through that detail sort of as you were on your own. But on the first page, it's sort of a summary comparison of things as they were in 2022, and then how they are for 2023. So the top section is net assessed value. The net assessed value last year was $97,140,946. There was an 11.9% increase to your net assessed value this year for 2023. So your amount of net assessed value now is $180,680,507. And so that is the total net assessed value that your property tax levy is based upon. It does not control your tax levy, it does not increase or decrease your tax levy, what it affects is the rate that taxpayers pay. There's an inverse relationship between net assessed value and rate. As net assessed value increases, property tax rate decreases. So you have 11.9% increase to your net assessed value, and the statewide max levy growth quotient this year was 5%. So the levy that you are eligible to collect from taxpayers this year is 5% higher than it was last year. So that rate information is the next block down, it compares your rates in 2022. The top section is those funds inside the maximum levy. Your general, Motor Vehicle Highway, New Park. You also have what's called Cumulative Capital Development Fund. That fund is set based upon a rate, and it is a collection outside of the maximum levy. So if your current rate is .0429, it could be five cents, it could be .05. You have the option, if you would like, next year prior to the first of May, you can go through the process to increase that if you ever wanted to, and the DLGF has recently changed legislation, if you increase that to the max, they will not shift it downwards based upon trending net assessed value as they have in the past. So if you chose to reestablish to the five cent rate, it would not change in the future going forward. I assume at one point your rate was probably five cents, but the DLGF would apply trending based upon growth and net assessed value, and it would pull that rate down. So that's probably why it's no longer at five cents. So if you look at the totals line, you can somewhat see the effect that that increase in net assessed value had to your rate. Last year, your rate was almost 20 cents per $100 of net assessed value. This year, it's dropped almost a cent, so it's almost 19, it's .1871 per $100 of net assessed value. And then below that, in the property tax levy section, are the amounts that you levied for General Motor Vehicle Highway and Park last year, and the amounts that we currently have you set for estimate that you will bring in for those funds this year for General Motor Vehicle Highway and Park. So that amount went up by 5%, as you would expect, because the max levy growth quotient was 5%. So where you're bringing in 5% more. And then, since that Cumulative Capital Development grows based upon net assessed value, its growth rate of 11.9% equals the change in net assessed value above of 11.9%. So you're set to bring in about $5,000 more in the Cumulative Capital Development this year. So moving on to the second page, is just sort of a snapshot of how your budgets performed in 2021. This is based upon your annual report as was filed with the DLGF earlier this year. So we have obviously a listing of the funds, then what that beginning cash balance was at the beginning of 2021, what the receipts were, how much you brought in. So that's property tax money, and then any other, like fees, any sort of fines that you bring in, it brings in also the motor vehicle, gas, the, for local road and street, and for Motor Vehicle Highway. Some of this is user fees, like for your LEAF fund, and there's riverboat wagering money here, there's a number of different property sources, but each of those receipts include all sources that were available in 2021. And then the budget and dispersment column is what you actually spent, where you actually were at the end of the year, what you spent in each of those funds. And then your ending cash balance, those are all over zero, nothing, nothing ended the year, but these budgeted funds ended the year last year below zero. Everything was funded and sustained last year. The next column, over net cash flows, just shows how the budget was funded. So anything that's white means that you had excess, you brought in more than you spent in that fund, you add into your bottom line at the end of 2021. If anything is pink, that just means you spent more than you brought in in those funds. So you have that in your riverboat fund and your CEDF fund. I know, for example, you used some CEDF revenues to sort of help, I believe it was in your LEAF pickup fund, it was, you were sure, due to some timing and billing and how those fees were collected, you had to use some CEDF funds to sort of take care of that last year. So that's partially why that one's the pink, they're rather than being funded and having added to those net assessed values. The last column we show there is operating balance. What that refers to is the amount you have left as a balance, as it is a percentage of your budget and dispersments. So you're kind of, it's how much you're trying to keep to operate to make up for those times in between when you get your large tax write-offs. So if you divide it, for example, if you look at the general fund line, if you divide that ending balance of 96,824 by the budget and dispersments number of 149085, that's how we establish that 64.95%. So we like those numbers to be at least 15%, ideally 25%, and if they're higher than that, that just means that you're, you're bringing in more, you're growing more balances than you've spent in those funds. So some of them are due to the fact that you have somewhat lower amounts of receipts and lower amounts of budget, so it makes the, the percentage numbers look really high, but in actuality, the balances themselves aren't high, it's just the operating balance that's high. So the next page covers the same.
Says selected funds, so are these the big funds? Why were they selected?
These are the bigger ones with them, with more activity in them. If you have special fee, not every fund has a budget developed for it that goes through Gateway, so these are your funds that go through Gateway, they are ones that bring in property tax, and the likes of the Motor Vehicle Highway gas tax, local road and street brings in gas tax. CEDF is the local income tax, which is the taxes that individuals pay on their, from their payroll taxes. So that's what, anything that brings in, those are considered major operating funds, and those are the ones that we choose to put here, or if anything is requested locally that you would like to see in here, then we include those two there on the budget, like you're going to keep track of your refuse fee locally, which is user supported, or if you want to keep track of that LEAF fund, you have to develop and actually prepare a budget for, and that's why these are here.
Okay, one more question. Does there any reason why you wouldn't total up net cash flows or all these categories, and look at that number versus each other, or is that the wrong way to look at it?
Somewhat, because you can't just randomly spend money from any one fund for any other purpose. So you could look at that as whole as, yes, we have a total of, that, that number's actually in your annual report for 2021, that's where you can see those totals there, but you can't, for instance, take Motor Vehicle Highway money and use it to pay for car expenses. So we're trying to keep it sort of contained based upon the budget function and based upon the use of those fees. You're looking at it on an individual basis, since you can't, you don't have the freedom to just decide to spend one type of receipt on an unapproved sort of expenditure. So that's why we don't have that necessarily. And it doesn't encompass all of your funds, either, it didn't really, you know, it would only represent a portion of what your, your total cash balance is. So if you check your annual report, that's where you can see the total balance for everything. And so the next year is the same information for 2022. This is still considered a budget year. You, you haven't completed this year, your budgets are still active, you're still completing the budgets that you submitted this time last year for 2022. So it's, this information is set up the same way, 2022 beginning is equal to the 2021 ending, then we have your estimated receipts, what those budgets were that were turned into the DLGF and approved through the DLGF, and then what your estimated ending cash balances are for the end of this year. Again, you can see that there is no funds that are going below zero for their ending balances, there are a couple where their expenses are slightly more, and they're, again, some needed receipts being your general fund and again your riverboat fund. Riverboat right now is somewhat, in a little turmoil, there was some legislation a couple years ago, it was passed, that changed how some of the riverboat is being distributed. It doesn't affect you as greatly, because you have casinos in local county, but it still changes the distributions slightly for riverboat. So those receipts are somewhat, we never know what to expect, we don't get the estimates on riverboat like we do for some other state distributed revenues like CEBET or Motor Vehicle or Local Road and Street. So these estimates are our best guesses of what will come in this year, those can always change, but we don't always know for sure. So, like I said, there's, all of your budgets were funded, some of them were considered unbalanced, that general fund and the riverboat fund. But again, if you look at the operating balance, in the far right column, your general is the only one that's really getting close to that 30, or that 15 to 25% range, refuse is a little bit, but again, that's a local user fee supported one act is the LEAF pickup fund. So you can choose to shift levy around between funds if you choose to. So for example, you give levy to General, Park, and MBH. If you so chose to alleviate any of overage that's being shifted to general, because more activity obviously takes place in your general fund, and your Park, or your MBH and your Park funds have fairly healthy balances, you could, if you so chose, this year to shift levy to the general fund from those other two funds. And it's not permanent, you can shift it back and change it back next year if you want to, but you do have the option, if you would like, to put more levy towards the general fund. Because as you flip over to page, the next page, which is the same summary information for 2023, you'll see that the general fund is this year out of balance by about $41,000. Now, right, there's not really enough levy all in the MBH and Park to make that completely go away, but there is enough where you can ship, because MBH and Park could almost go without levy for a couple of years, because they have significant balances based upon what their budgets are usually. So you would have the, if you chose, the ability to shift levy towards general to sort of alleviate some of that, and it doesn't have to be done right now at budget time, it can be done when the 1782 notice comes, which is usually in November, prior to the end of the year. So if that's something you want to discuss, or if you're happy with doing the general fund the way it is, that's fine, but the only issue is, by spending those reserves down, the estimate being out that operating balance in your general fund is about 10% at the end of 2023. That's below the 15 to 25% recommended operating balance. So either we have to bring in more revenues from some other source, or shift property tax to be on the fund for the time being to sort of alleviate some of that.
I have a question on page three, there was a fourth from the bottom, the CCD book 402. Shouldn't it be a positive if we're taking 45,000 minus 41,536?
You're spending more than you're bringing in, you're spending 45,000, and you're bringing in 41,000.
Okay. So that shouldn't be red then either, or?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, the formatting didn't work, it should be red, it should be, the 3464 is correct.
Okay.
But it should be red, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, you can catch that. So are there any other questions about the summary information or your budgets? So the budgets on the 2023 page, what we have here for budgeted dispersments is what has been turned in and submitted for your public advertisement for your budget process this year. The remainder of the documents that I've given you are, it's all of the information that we have entered on Gateway for your budget. The first document is what's called Form 3, it's your advertisement, it advertises when your meetings are, when employers or people can come, like tonight, when they publicly commented one thing they would like to. It shows what the total amount of levy is that's requested, it shows what tax cap impact is estimated, and then it shows, we have a page here that details each fund, and it shows what the budget estimate is, it shows what the estimated amount of property tax is that you were expected to collect, it shows what the current tax levy is. So we'll point out that in the, that you did decide to shift levy to general fund this year, the advertisement is in there for the general fund, just a little bit higher than normal, of than what we, because I think it's about 121,000 that we had suggested before. But I wanted to make sure that if you did decide you wanted to shift any property tax, that it was, you had the availability, because everything that's advertised here on this page is considered the maximum amount. You can always go down, you can decrease budgets, you can shift property tax around between funds, but this is the maximum you could have in any given fund, so the maximum budget you could have in your general fund is what's been advertised at 213, 191, and on down for that column. So those are just some, kind of how this form works, this is always considered the absolute, the ultimate, the maximum that can be levy for any fund, the maximum that can be budgeted for any fund, but you can always make changes and drop those. For anything that's DLGF oversigned, which that would be anything that receives property tax, motor vehicle, local road and street, those budgets cannot go above this number, the DLGF will cut it automatically if you submit a budget that's over this number. But the home rule funds, the local funds, you have a little bit more leeway with, but we still recommend to try to keep your budgets as close to what you have advertised here for those home rule funds as well. The next section is what's called Form 4, this is the budget ordinance that you'll actually sign in October. If you need to make any changes to your budget, if you opt to, we can make changes to this form and provide you a new one, and you can have it that night to, to sign. Actually, and then even actually, if you decide to make a change on the fly that night, you can mark through it, the council president can initial it, and the DLGF will accept it as legitimate, as long as it's signed, dated, and turned into the DLGF within eight days of your meeting in October. So the next section in this document is the detail of your budget. If anything that's got this like dark green barrier between the sections, that is what would be your budget detail. So it goes in sections, and each green section is what is like total length section above it. So the top section is your casino riverboat budget, then there's Brady Day, you don't have a budget Brady Day, and then the next, I think, two to three pages are your general fund budget detail items. And then goes on to each one individually, under fund, you can also see what fund those items are for. So those are the things, items that you can discuss amongst yourselves, these are all entered based upon information you received from Joan, items needed to be changed or updated, a number of your budgets are the same as they were previous years, but we have made changes as she requested or she requested. The section after that detail is also the detail of the receipts that we are estimating to come in for the second half of this year and for all of next year. Because a budget process in Indiana is really an eight-month process, because they determine whether or not you can support what you're planning to spend the rest of this year before they approve what you can spend for next year. So we have made estimates for what you'll receive the end of this year before that what we'll receive for next year. And those estimates are generally based upon your historical receipts, unless it's something like tax levy where we have actual calculations, or lit that we have actual calculations, the other that's your CEDF, actual calculations and information from the DLGF for those.
So are these numbers generated by you, Joan, or combination?
We generally do those, we look at what was on your, your actual performance from 2021, we then use also the information we get from the DLGF, but we always accept Joan's input on anything, especially for your local fee-based items, especially for, so she'll tell us how much the contract is for your LEAF removal, she'll tell us how much, you know, so you can kind of know how much your billings are going to be to bring in from homeowners, just support that. So she gives us that information, if it's other things, then we can kind of pull it from different sources. We tend to find that over time, those local receipts from like fee-based activity and local contracts and things like that tend to remain fairly constant, unless there is a change in a contract or a new revenue line that comes in. So you won't see a lot of difference from year to year in those numbers because of that fact. We try to keep those estimates conservative, we don't ever want to overestimate anything and make you think you're going to get more than is feasible for you to receive, we want to make sure that your revenue estimates are as reasonable and supportive as your budget estimates are.
So I, I noticed that the American Rescue Plan...
It was there, we actually could have removed that one, because we were not given a budget for that behind, do you still have funds that you need to spend from your ARPA?
Yes.
I mean, you could, you can either include that on the budget, it was included last year, I think we put it on there, so you'd spend if you need to. It can be included on the budget, it can be done as an additional appropriation. It doesn't have to be on the budget, it can, it can, just has to be appropriated some way, whether it's on the budget or for an additional. Yeah.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah. There are other questions? I am always available if you have questions, Joan has my information, I should be right, include that under for you, but also the emails, phone calls, if anything comes up or you have questions, we can send them to Joan if you want, whoever you choose to get hold in, if you have anything, I'm willing to answer your questions.
Thank you, thank you.
So Joan, what's the timeframe for approving the budget for us to?
I think it's supposed to be done next, the meeting, by the next week.
I was asking, Don't we have a budget meeting in between to kind of go into greater detail?
We have a budget meeting.
Already? That was on the Friday?
No, that was, that was on a Monday at nine o'clock in the morning, like the one we had done, and we went through that.
You canceled one and made it another day.
I canceled that, when I said there was two days I couldn't do it, when we set the budget.
Yeah, we had a meeting, Rich and I were here, you guys couldn't make it.
Right, and then there was another meeting?
No.
Okay.
It's only one meeting. I had to turn the budget in.
Well, I'm sure that if we have questions, we can hold another meeting, or workshop, you know, for the council to be able to discuss.
Your next meeting is in October, which is probably scheduled for your October 11 meeting.
Yes.
It is scheduled to be two weeks after this public meeting, because we have a meeting in between with proper members of the board to discuss the budget, we need to hold that October, it'll be in October.
Okay.
Well, I would be okay if you guys wanted to have another meeting.
I think, that might be a good idea.
To walk through it, and, you know, the deep, the detail, it's more important to us than we covered just now.
Right, and if we come up with any questions, then we can reach out, you know, from after this meeting. So Joan, if you can tell me what days would be good, I think you're the hardest, you know, to find.
Friday mornings work.
Friday mornings work for you? Okay.
Okay.
Then the meantime after three on Fridays.
Okay. Friday mornings and after three on Fridays. Are those good for you, Rich, and for Friday? Friday morning or Friday after three? Okay, how about you, Ralph?
Yes. How preferred would you choose?
Maybe two.
Twenty-third is tough. Twenty-third's tough.
Twenty-third is tough for you? Okay.
Sixteenth is fine.
Which day, sixteen?
Yeah, sixteen.
This Friday? I think it's okay for me. Rich, can you meet this Friday?
What time?
Either in the morning, like, nine o'clock, ten?
Before, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock is even better, okay. Is that okay with you? Or after three on Friday?
Morning.
Okay.
Eight AM.
All right, eight AM to sixteen. Okay, we set a meeting? Super, okay.
What time is it?
Eight.
Eight in the morning?
Yes, eight in the morning.
Right.
You don't want to be present?
I don't think so. Thank you.
You don't want to give me a present?
If you could be present?
Okay.
You know, because I'm sure we may have questions. Okay. I will have Samantha put a notice of this up on the, on the website too that we're going to be discussing, so. Okay. All right, thank you.
Do you need to say anything?
I don't think so. This will be the end of the budget part. Okay, thank you.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Have a safe, you know, thank you as well.
Okay. All right, so we move on with the agenda and we go on to number five, which is approving the minutes of the August ninth, twenty twenty-two meeting. And Joan, we have a copy of the July meeting. I thought we had already.
You did, and you wanted me to go ahead and make all those changes and grenade all those changes. I re-listened to the.
Okay.
Meeting recording. So which one do you want to approve?
Okay, well, let's start with the older one, the July twelfth, please.
I have no comments.
I have no comments either for this, gentlemen?
No.
Rich, did you have any questions? All right. Then I need a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
No, second.
Okay, Michael Martinez moved, Ralph Fox seconded the approval of the minutes from the July twelfth meeting. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So the ayes have, it has been approved. Let us move on to the next.
I need to know earlier.
You can give it to us to sign.
Sure, I'll sign it.
Yeah, then we'll.
Sorry, I didn't have to sign it.
Okay. In the meantime, I will begin and bring up the second set of minutes. These are the minutes for the August ninth, twenty twenty-two town council meeting. Any comments, corrections, changes to the minutes?
I have none.
Did I hear that correct?
Rich, do you have any comments on those minutes?
No comments, Rich.
No comments from Michael either, okay. We're waiting, Rich is still looking through.
I gave him to him early, he didn't have time to read them evidently.
He wasn't here, he needs to know it now.
Well, no, but I gave him all that back, it was after our ten o'clock this morning.
Any comments, Rich? On the minutes for the August ninth meeting, do you have any comments on those? No? Okay, there are no more additions, corrections, or changes to the minutes. So I need a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve minutes.
Okay. Right. Michael Martinez moved, who seconded?
Rich.
Oh, Rich Young seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Okay, the minutes have been approved.
Thank you.
There we go, that's the second one, okay. So we move on now to number six on our agenda, which is the short-term rental permit applications. This is a return of four fifteen Pinewood. We did not have enough to, members present at the meeting for a majority. So today we do have, and we will have to revisit again, the applications for four fifteen Pinewood's short-term rental permit application. Any comments from council members here? Or any questions?
I don't think so either.
Okay. And I know that we did our public comments when we were together the last time, unless there is any other kind of comment today.
Does Rich know, like, why we're here again?
We had a vote, Rich, I don't know if we talked about it or not, when I, you and I talked after that meeting. But I don't know.
Four fifteen Pinewood?
I don't remember.
Okay, well, there was only three members here. It was two to one, I made three to pass it. So in my eyes, every single thing that they, that was asked of them was addressed. So, you know, we voted and we couldn't come to a three-person vote. So I don't know if you had time to review anything on this property between last month and this month.
So did it pass two to one?
No.
It did not pass because there were only two to one, and we need to have at least three.
But there were two in favor.
Yes.
So I will go to Joan here first.
Well, we need to run the, run, run the elections again. So it has to be, everybody has to vote all over again, you know, on this one. So I will then bring forth a short-term rental application for four fifteen Pinewood. I need a motion made to approve this permit application.
I'll make the motion to approve four fifteen Pinewood.
Okay, Michael Martinez has made a motion to approve. I need a second.
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, well, Rich Young has seconded. And all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we have a three to one, and, because Ralph has let go of the vote, are you voting nay?
Nay.
Nay, okay, one nay. And the short-term rental permit application for four fifteen Pinewood has been granted. I am just going to caution that we hope that you will really observe everything that, that, that has been presented to you because of the large number of people who are very concerned, you know, about this, so that I think that people will be watching and listening, you know, and stuff very closely.
Yes.
Okay, it is a huge concern, so, so, okay?
Yeah, thank you for permitting it, um, thank you to the trust, appreciate it.
Okay, well, we hope, we hope that that's the way it's going to be, okay? Thank you. All right. We move on to number seven, reports from committees, officers, and the clerk treasurer.
Public comments.
Well, the comments we should have had before it started, but if you would like to say something now, go ahead. I know that you spoke last time, but go ahead.
I think they should have had public comments before you voted.
Well, that's what I mentioned them, but nobody's hands came up. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I did ask for comments.
This is the beginning of the decline of the Shigana Shore's for the public for the short-term rental. You know, this place is going to turn into a beach walk. We used to be a nice, quiet, private neighborhood, and we're, some people are exploiting this neighborhood for their personal gain, and it's just going to get to be more and more and more, how do you mix it down the road before every house out here is short-term rental? I've lost my, I'm losing my privacy. I can't, I feel more safe to lock my doors now than to leave them open, because I used to know all the neighbors on my street and it's caved down. I can't leave my garage doors wide open all the time because I don't know who these people are that's coming down my street. And I don't believe that the people that are renting these buildings out know who they are. I also heard at the last meeting that this particular place, every neighbor opposed this. Well, you have every neighbor opposing a short-term rental for one person's profit, you know, I mean, this is getting ridiculous. And I own more houses and property in Michigan shore than probably anybody. And I could have turned them all into that, but I chose to keep my rental business in Michigan City and rental neighborhoods. So this didn't happen to harm me, but what we've lived, it's getting to be a disgrace. And I'm disgusted that this board passed it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowman. Okay, so let us go on to the reports from committees, officers, and the clerk treasurer. Joan, invoices, vouchers?
Vouchers. Vouchers for the July thirty-first payroll, which was just one person for the monthly payroll. The gross payroll was thirty-nine hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. That includes the transfer of the payroll fund to the cash, but so we could pay it.
All right, so we need a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Okay. A motion to approve, this is the budget, I believe, for the court enforcement of building commissioner?
Correct.
Okay. And we, I did not see one of those online.
I'm not going to put it on.
Oh, okay, all right. I didn't realize that that was the one.
Just the payroll.
Okay, okay, very good, okay. All right, thank you. All right, so I need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. All right, Ralph Fox has made a motion to approve. I need a second?
Second.
Okay, Rich Young has seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it has been approved.
Okay. Why, go ahead, sign this one, we'll read payroll taxes for that payroll.
Okay, thank you.
Payroll taxes for a particular payroll that included taxes that are withheld from the employee to pay plus the taxes that the town has to pay, Medicare and fight. And that came to five hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I need a motion to approve the payroll taxes? Okay, Rich Young has moved.
Second.
Michael Martinez seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Rich, you can collect these all on again and we can, after the meeting, if you would please. We have two more vouchers to come in.
Okay. All right.
The August two oh two two additional vouchers, I'm a bit of a free hand for the, for the voters. The actual vouchers. I have one voucher in here again for Mick Wolf. What had happened, I made out the check for his business and he no longer wanted it there, he wanted it to him personally, so I had to cancel out the checks and start over again, his check. So, and for some reason, the system is blending them up, so you'll see different things as we go through. Mick Wolf for the spring cleanup, four hundred dollars. Baker Jelly, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents for accounting services and some of the budget support that we had back in July. Premier Insurance Group, Public Risk, nine thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. Classic Catering for the seventy-fifth anniversary champ, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Mick Wolf again for cleaning, prepare the parks for the seventy-fifth, two hundred dollars. AT&amp;T include telephone, internet, about sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Mick Wolf again for park mowing, thirteen times from between April, May, June, July, and August, sixteen hundred and twenty-five dollars. Bike Stop Recycling LLC, three bike racks, four hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. And Rich, did you ever pick them up?
I wasn't feeling, but I forgot, so I hung them.
I know, I wasn't feeling good.
I didn't say that because I wondered, geez.
Hopefully they still have them and have them. Chase Card Services Software for Microsoft, twenty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents for Adobe, sixteen dollars and four cents. Back to Mick Wolf again, this was for a hundred dollars for cutting up and shipping a large tree in Leeds Park. And it broke up. Chase Services, which printing the flyers, um, from the, you know, the sounds from the shores in August, a hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty cents. And we have for web development for GoDaddy, thirty-two dollars and sixteen cents. It's technically not really the development from what I understand, it's a fee to keep the line. Mick Wolf for cutting a path on the creek, two hundred dollars. Jim McKay, who provides our technical assistance, a hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And then we have NIPSCO, garage electric, fifty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents, street lights, seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents, and gas for the garage, fifty-five dollars and twenty cents, for a grand total of fifteen thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars and four cents.
Okay, any questions? All right, if no questions, I need a motion to approve.
I have a second.
Okay, Rich Young moved, Ralph Fox seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Thank you.
While you're signing, then I'll go ahead and maybe do.
Please.
Vouchers for September the thirteenth. Town of Long Beach for food protection, five thousand twenty-three dollars. Michigan Shore and Sound for side department, one hundred and five dollars. Office depot business credit, supplies for ink and ton, copy paper, and all kinds of four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-four cents. They gave us a forty-five dollar.
A forty-five dollar pay-wish.
Forty-five cent credit. Republic Services for garbage and refuse, four thousand and fifty dollars and twenty cents. Department of Water Works for Kinkade Park, nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Frontier Lawn for repairs to the tractor, a hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents for, um, that was for parts, Laker, four hundred and twenty dollars. Brenda Hethen Traveling Bank, fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. There for Chuck for postage, thirty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents for certified letters. Sharon Casup, eight hundred and eighty dollars for refund on the building permit. Bradley Adamski, fifty, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for July, August, and September for legal services. Freeman and Associates for legal review of Grobelny, forty-five dollars. Legal for draft, phone calls, correspondence, same for Grobelny, two hundred and seventy dollars. Legal document, documentation for town council president, new council, two hundred and eighty dollars. That's all from Freeman. Michigan Shore and Sound for our department for fire protection, three thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Department of Water Works for the, for the garage, nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Office depot, um, charge for postage, two hundred and forty dollars. By the way, we could purchase stamps at Office Depot if you're willing to want it. Charge Office Depot for a grand total of seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. That concludes my vouchers.
Okay, thank you, Joan, I just had a question. It says it's lead pickup billing postage, so is that for the postage that's coming up? It says it's lead pickup billing postage, so is that for the postage that's coming up, huh?
Oh, because I split the postage between, send sales up together. One posting is, I mean, postage goes to the lead pickup and one goes to the rep.
Okay.
So we split it.
I'm just curious.
And I buy the stamps when I can buy the stamps.
Thank you.
And then will be coming up shortly in December. And then we had send out extra postage for stamps for the lead of buildings.
Well, there will be, there's going to be a mailing for the lease. I don't know, we requested dates, so.
And just follow it up right now.
Well, you mean the mailing, you mean just the notification?
We're going to send out, no, not a mailing. It's just going to be, it'll be a newsletter and the, and the, a letter about leaves and then a newsletter for the town. Okay, thank you, John, those gentlemen, any other questions?
No.
Okay, so I, then I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Michael Martinez moved to approve these vouchers. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ralph Fox seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. The ayes have it, this, all of these vouchers have been approved. Okay, thank you. Now, we, I had included a 75th anniversary report from Jean Paxton, but I believe she left it with Dolly, and Dolly didn't realize she needed it here, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to address that the next time. I'm looking just to see in case she did send me.
I think I know what did the problem.
That's, that's all right. We can have a report then next time around.
Yeah, I'll just tell you when next time.
Yeah, so we're.
Have the action required.
No, 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 no. So I would just say.
I have one comment, O'Neil. I don't have one copy of a report on the 75th anniversary for the file. None of the committee minutes have been turned in to me.
Then, John, we'll get, we'll pull all of those together to make sure that you have all of them.
We don't need that in the file.
Okay, we will put them all together. Okay, I will add, make a request for all the minutes. All right, so then the next thing over here, the part C that I added is that because we've been concerned about finding a new candidate to take the place of Mike Lancioni in, on the town council. So after having approached quite a few people, chatting with them in town, and those who have been working on various things and whatever, we do have a candidate now who is very interested in the position. I reported to the Democratic Party Chair with regards to this, and he has begun, I guess the work that he's got to do, he's got to fill out a form, he's got to write a letter, and he's got to get in touch with Dr. Corrigan of the county, and then it will go forward from there. So I can report now that we have a candidate, interested candidate happens to be Samuel Paxton. So he is agreeing to take the place of Mike Lancioni through the end of Mike's term. So, so that's.
Caucus.
There, well, the Democratic Party, they're, they are, the, Ilford County will determine what they're going to do, whether they're going to appoint, whether there's any kind of caucus. Caucus is usually if there's more than one candidate, so they may just appoint. So, so we will wait for word back from them now.
Yeah, so when you get word back, if there's going to be a caucus, how is the community to notify?
Well, then we'd have to notify either, you know, about what we're going to post it. You know, obviously, at the town, it will put it up on the website, and probably an email blast, you know, to make sure, and then we can reach out to those who don't get the, you know, emails to, you know, as best we can, so. Okay.
Seems to me I requested because we weren't sure, even though.
We weren't sure about what?
Mike Lancioni was Democrat.
Yes.
Because we've gone to open elections. If that's the way it has to be, to turn it over to the Democrats, too late, you can report.
That's, yeah, with the, him being part affiliated, that's who names a replacement in midterm or during midterm.
Yeah.
No, we have open election.
You play it.
Yeah. It's a party of the, of the, of the one that looked. So if that is, in case if there's, you know, if it ever turns out, I mean, that we can't get anybody at all, then it could be open to anybody else. But, anyway, so that's a, that's a report so far. So he is a candidate, it's not been, you know, finalized or anything, but he is a candidate. So that's a report on that. So let's move on now to resolutions and ordinances. And the first thing that I need to bring up is the adoption of an updated FEMA slash DNR ordinance, because our town has a great deal of land that's located on White Ditch, and we've got a very large floodway and a flood plain in the town. So we are actually requested, and we are, we have to approve this ordinance with regards to flood hazards in the town and controlling flood hazards. If we do not do this, we run the risk of our town losing FEMA, I guess approved or FEMA, you know, lower-priced insurances for our residents. And I don't want to have any kind of problems over here with regards to that. So we are going to be presenting the ordinance this evening. So I believe Mr. Adamski does have a copy with him, otherwise you've seen yours electronically I can open up mine to. And the ordinance is actually asking us pretty much everything that it was on the past ordinance that we have had. There were a couple of questions that had been raised, one of them having to do with the individual who is assigned to actually reach out to owners and do things, but did you see the explanation I had given about that? I have that with me, and I could just read that out so, so that we would know where I put this. I know I had one. Okay, just sign this. Okay, here we go. So it was, since we're working on, oh, no, I thought that we do not need to explicitly say that it is a code enforcement officers like building commissioner who would make the contact. This individual works together with the advisory plant commission and the floodplain administrator, and as such, can be assigned to do this as a part of the responsibilities of the office. We would have more trouble if, for some reason, we were without this individual, this code enforcer, and would not have anyone to contact. So we need to, we can leave this open and just assign that job in the job description. So that was one question, okay? There was another question raised, and it was with regards to the town perhaps having more stricter rules than the DNR. So according to DNR, we are allowed to be much more restrictive than the actual DNR and FEMA. So we already do have some of those restrictions on the books, and we are not limited as to when we can change and add a different kind of restriction. Of course, it goes through an ordinance process where we would have to bring something up, an amendment, we'd have a public hearing, and then, you know, and put the ordinance in place if we had to do something else. So, but that, this does not restrict us from moving on and, you know, and adding something, so. Okay, so.
Is there any more question?
Am I not?
Did you get any feedback from the floodplain administrator about this?
No, he thought that it looked very straightforward, and we can address it, you know, the way it is.
So what you're looking for then, at that point, if there are any questions, rather than reading through 31 big ordinance, you're looking for a motion to do it on first reading by title only, the evidence that the unanimous vote on that, moving it through second reading, or the second third reading to your option.
Okay.
You start again.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Ralph Fox moves to.
Introduce by title of my flood damage prevention ordinance. You have to do that before.
Okay.
First reading.
On the first reading, okay? And I need a second. Okay, so I.
Now, this is an ordinance?
This is.
We have to keep things record straight, we need an ordinance number on it?
Yes, we will.
No. 2022-03.
-03, yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So we have a motion by Ralph, and then we had a second by Michael. Okay. To approve the motion, the flood hazard ordinance on first read, or on title reading only, reading title. Okay. Michael Martinez seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you say aye, Ralph? Okay, all right, well, Rich, sorry. Okay, the ayes have it. Okay. Thank you.
Then we want a motion, so that would be unanimous, to move forward to adopt on second reading.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt on the second reading.
Okay. Michael Martinez has moved to accept on second reading.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ralph Fox seconds this. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, four ayes, then that is carried.
We have to suspend the rules in order to do them.
That would just say suspend the rules, but that was too.
Should be in or not?
In minutes, yeah.
In minutes, it should be.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So now we can move on to the next resolution. And that is adoption of the resolution regarding the moratorium on BZA special use grants and STR permit applications.
I don't think I brought that to you. Do you have those to sign?
I have the back page of the FEMA ordinance, and I made two copies of that.
What FEMA was?
I mean, the one we just said, the flood hazards. I mean, that was my shorthand. This is the flood hazards.
Okay, for the flood hazards.
Flood hazards. So I do have that, and I will be casting this around for signature signing. Okay? And we'll run progress. Okay, this is a resolution on the short-term rental permit moratorium. Ralph?
Yes, at the last meeting, if everyone remembers, we did approve a notification to the community that we would be implementing a moratorium on short-term rentals in 60 days. And what this, tonight, we have the proposed resolution in front of us. It would be the eventual moratorium. It will go into effect until another month at the end of the 60-day period, but we wanted to get it done so that it's ready, it's a treaty to go, even before our next meeting, the 60 days will occur. So essentially, the document, if it's appropriate, I'll read the pertinent section, it's not the whole document.
Please.
Is that fair?
Go ahead, please.
Whereas the short-term rental safety and security program was established by the town of Michigan Shores to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of all Michigan Shores residents and guests, ensuring short-term rental units are safe for guests, are proper sized relative to the number of occupants, and that all guests are aware of the Michigan Shores ordinances. In the last few years, it's become clear that the residents of Michigan Shores are generally concerned of the process and protections the ordinance provides. As such, the town council has determined that a temporary moratorium on new applications for short-term rentals would be established so that the town council can evaluate how to best address this concern. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordained and enacted by the town council of the town of Michigan Shores of Port County, Indiana, as follows. Beginning on October 9th, 2022, and continuing for a period of six months, 180 days, the town shall not accept any new applications to register short-term rental units. While there is every intention of completing this work in a specified timeframe, if necessary, this moratorium may be extended to allow for a full and complete review and resulting action. B, this resolution has no effect on the processing of registration applications that have already been received, received as of the date of this resolution. For clarification, this would be any application that has been submitted with all correct paperwork required to apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals for special use, and is paid the required fee to the town clerk. The rest is just a. So essentially, what this is, is it's to buy some time for the town council and the plan commission to review feedback we've received from the community and investigate what issues may exist with short-term rental ordinance as it's on the books today. And the plan would be to have a subcommittee or a committee to do all that work so that it's not a constant conversation in the meeting. It would be publicly available, but we would make recommendations through the plan commission, because the plan commission was the original body that adopted, or wrote the ordinance, and then those would be certainly approved, come at the town council for approval and debate, obviously. Any questions?
Nice work.
No, very good work, yeah, thank you. Good job on this.
You okay?
Yeah.
Just change the date, it's September.
I'll also put that as resolution 03.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, September.
Add to the document, it's 13th.
Oh, yes.
Oh, you got November down.
So can we, we can wind up a copy that we signed tonight, and then I'll provide John.
Obviously, you're voting and signing it tonight, so it's a cover.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right, so no more questions from council members? Rich, you're good? All right, then in that case, I.
Well, I have a question. All this information is through the proper channels, right? By law, like newspaper announcements, all that stuff prior to this?
Well, this has been posted on the website.
It's on.
Okay, and it's been on the window.
It's on.
So, yeah. And then it will go up, obviously, you know, once, you know, we'll post this as well, so people will know.
Okay.
It's also been made down for the last two meetings, so probably.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay. All right, so in that case, I will ask for motion to, to accept, to approve this resolution?
I'll make a motion to accept and approve this resolution.
What is the number for this one, John?
202203.
Also, okay, okay.
This will be a for.
Well, but this is a resolution, the other one wasn't over.
All right.
Okay, all right. 2022, okay. I need a second. Okay, Rich Young. Okay, Michael Martinez has moved to accept the resolution, 202203, short-term rental permit moratorium resolution. Rich Young has seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, four ayes, this resolution has passed.
So, John, I will send you the final copy just for your records tomorrow, and you will sign it.
I'm signing.
Copy tonight.
I'm signing, right, I signed one right now. We can have everybody sign one that's written in, is that okay? For today?
We have to initial it.
This is the fee.
Okay. All right, here we go. Do you have another copy? Okay. Okay. I think they're signing, I'll get it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
That's what.
Yes, very good, thank you very much. With regards, I have a question. Now, I know that I'm sort of interrupting here between, we move to the next one. But I do have a question. We're giving this to the plan commission to work on, and I'm wondering, can the plan commission actually invite citizen members of some type to actually work with them on this as well? Is that kind of thing okay?
Under the plan commission rules of procedure, we can do this.
You can do that.
They're not required to do it.
Okay, well, that's just interesting, in case there are, because there are residents who want to, you know, express themselves on it.
Is this something different?
That's the moratorium we just covered. Yeah, it's something totally different.
Is there a reason Michigan Shores is not here?
That's just a proposed, that's a policy, is that the, is that the one about the meetings?
No, I'm sorry.
Our resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something else. Yeah, that's just, that's something else, okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
What happened at the next planning meeting, or maybe even before, I will solicit for people from.
Speak up louder so that they hear.
Solicit members of the plan commission to participate in this committee. And we'll see how many people I can congeal into that, and then if we need more, we can. We will. We will, of course, invite feedback from the BZA, because they've been heavily involved in this process. The code enforcement officer, building commissioner, because she's been heavily involved in this. They'll be welcome providing.
Okay, great. Super. Thank you very much. Okay. Let us move on to the next, and that would be a proposal regarding an amended noise ordinance. Are we, I don't know if we're ready to do anything yet on that, or we're just going to discuss that today?
Just going to discuss it. Okay. How was it, Ken? A couple of months ago, there was some discussion about the fact that we actually didn't have quiet hours for the town of Michigan Shores. And there was some discussion about noise at short-term rentals, and that all led to I looked at the various ordinances that we have on Port County Shores that touch these things. And I looked at construction ordinance, follower ordinances, and our short-term rental ordinance from this perspective. But I also did some research on what surrounding communities do in this regard. I looked at Beverly Shores, Long Beach, and Michigan, just to see what other communities of a similar nature do in this regard. And, you know, there's a lot of similarities, but it's a bit all over the place. So in the Excel spreadsheet that provided you guys tonight, I did make some recommendations. That might be a strong word, but a couple of things. Michigan Shores does have limitations on when construction can occur. But we don't have anything specifically on yard maintenance. I thought that was interesting, because other communities do that, and cutting your grass is a different kind of thing than building a house. So I am proposing that we might want to look at having a yard maintenance timeframe as well. The other thing I found with fireworks, because I was a little confused at the complexity of our fireworks statutes, and when I, when I looked at Beverly Shores and Long Beach, they're exactly the same. And that led me to think, well, there's got to be something else going on here. And indeed, the state has very specific rules that we can't overrule about fireworks surrounding the Fourth of July and New Year's. We can provide limitations other than that, and so there's really nothing we can do with fireworks here, because we have as strict as we can based on state law. That was, I didn't know that. It was a good thing to find that. I would say about fireworks, we don't have anything about this in our current short-term rental ordinance, and it's going to be a recommendation of mine when we get to this, that we don't allow short-term rentals to have fireworks for a number of reasons. But we'll get to that as we work through that process. With quiet hours, I, I think, in talking to other people, I've gotten some support, that we need to establish quiet hours in our town. And I will make those recommendations when we get to that point. But the one thing that will be critical there is a definition of what quiet means. And that may take a little dinking around, digging around on my part, to come up with something, because quiet to one person is not that I. So that's kind of where we're at. I did have a question for Rich, because I didn't have a chance to talk to him the other day. And mainly, Rich, from the perspective of your background in the community, the timeframes we've established for construction in the town really Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 at night, and then on Sunday and holidays, 11:00 to 5:00. Do you have any background on what, where those numbers came from, or what constituents may feel about that?
I remember as president, the plan commission years ago, a member wanted to list for yard construction, for yard maintenance. But as regards to the construction, now I don't. But this member wanted to ban all yard, yard work or maintenance on Sundays and holidays. And I remind, well, I didn't remind him, but I said, for many, many years, I was a part-time, and sometimes you could only come out on Sunday. So, you know, if you tell me I can't mow my lawn, then the only day I could come out is on a Sunday. It's not right. So we backed off and limited the hours, but other than, other than that, the construction stuff, they don't know where they can.
So in that respect, if we give a separate description of residential timeframe, even though that would not be as constrictive as construction, it would, it would help out. Okay, I just, so I'm gonna work on this a bit, and, you know, bounce ideas off of you guys, and we'll work towards having a, I don't know if noisefulness is the right term, but we'll collect those kinds of things there so that when we do update our codified ordinances, sometimes, probably next year, they'll work their way into the total of the ordinance.
Okay. If I may make a couple just comments, just things. I've heard from residents that have called me or even stopped me on the street, and they've complained about the noise of when people start working at 7:00 in the morning, especially on the weekends. They would prefer that it happens later on. I know a member, fellow council member agrees, you know, I think with me, you know, on this, that when they start very early on a Sunday morning, on a holiday morning, it becomes very offensive. I know personally that one of the neighbors where we lived ran over to another neighbor's home on Easter Sunday, and I realize it's not a holiday for everybody, but, but this man pulled out a leaf blower. It was like 7:30 in the morning, and he started blowing leaves. So this person was rather incensed that on a big holiday, someone was really, you know, making a lot of noise, sort of an offensive kind of noise. But other than that, I have had calls, and people will say, can't we do something a little bit later, you know, in the day, so that it doesn't start at 7:00 in the morning? So my suggestion for that kind of thing might be is like no really loud blowers and all that kind of stuff until at least after 8:00, you know, for that. And then perhaps, and then there were a few that complained about the evening, where construction is still going on at 8:00 at night. Can that be curtailed to about 7:00, at least, you know, or even earlier? And I see here that Michigan stops theirs at 5:00, Beverly Shores stops at 6:00.
So one thing to keep in mind, if we, if we do limit construction more than it is in the debate, one of the things we want to be clear about is that the building commissioner would have the authority to approve work at different hours if it's an emergency. But a tree falls on your house.
Oh, yeah.
We can't tell them. You have to wait. Something has to be done, and we do.
And I'm sure that could be included in the ordinance.
Right, that's exactly what.
Any other comments on this? Any of your thoughts? No? Okay.
Commissioner.
Hi.
When I was all plan commission, the construction was less for someone Sunday, because people, like you said, come out and do their yard work. Some people come out and maintain their property also. You know, if they want to do a roof, if they want to do siding, that's going to make noise, and that's why they left that in there.
Okay.
For the construction, for the people who want.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
You can't stop and throw things on there.
Okay.
We can limit it, but.
We're limiting some of the hours. Did you add some?
No, I just, yeah, you know, you just bounce it off of us. I'd give you feedback.
Yes.
So just.
Yeah, I'm going to incorporate all the feedback I did, and then I'll make some final recommendations that we.
Okay, excellent. Awesome. Thank you very much, Ralph.
Can you tell us something about qualifications since he mentioned it? I have contacted, that was recommended by some of the people that are on AICL. I contacted them last week and asked them to get in contact with me to, or send me some information, because I did give them a little information. I haven't heard from them yet. It's not going to be cheap.
Hope for the qualification.
Okay.
I would not expect it to be from you, Ralph. Now, the first time isn't going to be expensive. Maintenance is probably more.
Well, I understand our qualification is set up where legally should be.
It is set up or not set?
Set up, because it's set up in the separate divisions like it's supposed to be.
Oh, yeah, I mean, there's nothing wrong with it.
So it's already set up. It's just a matter of them taking, going through it to make sure it is up to date.
Yeah. Rolling in the changes could have occurred.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for bringing that up, John. Let us move on to a, oh, the proposal regarding increasing BZA fees. The BZA had reported to us and brought to our attention, I believe, back in, actually, maybe July. I know for sure in August they talked about it, that they wanted to increase their fees from 150 to 250. So I worked on an ordinance that we had, I used as a basis, an ordinance that we had in town that where we increased fees back, I believe, in 2017 for, I think, for some of the inspections and building permit fees. So just using that, I put this together and added a 250. So I don't know if, Brett, did you have time to look at that? The one that was a BZA application fee schedule?
Yeah, well, I've got that specific on those. BZA rules themselves, which says that the BZA, as long as what their adoption doesn't conflict with the actual zoning ordinance, they can adopt the orders regarding filing, appealing, certification, comparisons, et cetera, within those fees.
Okay, so it doesn't have to come through us?
That was always my assumption.
Yes.
Can look when it was a BZA, but I did, Johnson is a more recent document. I did.
I tracked it on Jean. She's on holiday. Yes.
And she says, look, when I'm back, because she was the secretary
Right.
at the time of John, the document John gave us was done. I'm just trying to find the source of it. I think it's pretty much a word-for-word modern version of the older document that I had.
That was done by the attorney. Done by the attorney, is that term?
Okay. So we just need to kind of get to the bottom of that, and then we can pass it back to the BZA that they can do as they wish.
Okay, excellent. Okay. All right, so there's no action needed on this, and we pass it back to the BZA. All right? Awesome. Thank you very much. Now, and the last thing, and it's not for us, we don't have to act, you know, actually pass this today, because I would need to, I really was doing a little bit of research yesterday and today, and I wanted to introduce to you, it is a policy that we should set up for having electronic meetings, especially since we're purchasing the equipment and stuff. We need to put a policy in place that was required by the state of Indiana. So going forward, I would just like you to take a look at this. I mean, I think it looks straightforward, and if there are any kind of comments you want to make, you know, and please do, and then at the next, you know, let's do this before the next meeting, so at the next meeting, we could actually, you know.
I'll give the doc. I think it'll help to have this written down in a single place. It was a little complicated during the pandemic.
Yeah.
And it was relatively clear to me how it works. And I want to go through it one more time, because it does give us latitude to, again, create more stringent for state rules than the state.
Yes.
We just can't be more lax than the state provides.
Okay, so John, and then just take some time between now, and let's not wait until very, maybe a week before the next meeting, so that we would be able to put something together, and then I'll put it, you give me your ideas, and we'll put it together and, and have it ready for the next meeting. Okay?
And the equipment is on order. It just hasn't been received yet. As soon as it's received, we'll get it down here with Chris. We'll test it all out, and we'll.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Is the equipment currently seen?
No, not yet.
So it's not, it's on board.
Yeah, I know it's on order.
Okay.
I don't think.
Okay. All right.
I just wanted to.
Okay, so let's move on now to the departmental reports. Please, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Before I go through the recap of August, just wanted to take a moment to update you from the portion of homicide investigation from September 1st, where we responded to a family in West Lake, 300 block of Roland here in the town of Michigan Shores. Upon our arrival, we found two family members that were stabbed, one unfortunately has succumbed to his injuries. The second one is still with us in the trauma center, in very critical condition and fighting some infections. I want to personally thank your Michigan Fire Department, of which some of your members are here tonight, your first responders that assisted us, Mick and Chris Wolf, your former police chief, Robert Sokowski, who's also a member of the fire department, and Michael Chessdine, had responded to the scene, worked under some extremely difficult conditions, probably seen some things that normal people shouldn't have to see in their entire lifetime. And I want to personally thank Mick and the others that worked on John Early, who's still with us today. Played a significant part in keeping him alive that day, and I want to credit them for their efforts back to him as well. An individual, a person of interest was taken into custody, a family member, a citizen in charge, and is sitting in Port County jail at this time. I will talk about our response time, because I shared this with President Dumbries, and I think it's important that we talk about this tonight. One of the things that you, as council members, often get questioned about is why do you contract the Long Beach Police Department to serve the community when you could actually ask the work on the shares department to serve you as well? I will tell you, we're a very proactive department. We are nearby. Response times are very quick. This particular incident, we received the call at 9:25, arrived and I seen it at 9:30. At 9:35, the person of interest was taken into custody. Therefore, keeping this community safe, the individual was not allowed to flee from the residence. So I'd like to commend the work of the Long Beach Police Department, very pleased in our response to that particular incident.
Excellent.
Getting back to August, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 232 calls for service when compared to 306 calls for service in 2021 for a decrease of 74 calls for service. During the month, there were 18 incident reports that were documented with a total of nine individuals arrested. Four of those arrests were felony offenses, of which two individuals were charged with felony operating while intoxicated with a prior conviction, and two warrant arrests for individuals that are charged with felony charges. We also have five misdemeanor traffic-related arrests, of which three of those were operating while intoxicated as well. Overall, it's a steady month for us, specific to the town of Michigan Shores. Back on August 1st, we responded to Pachetran Drive, a reference to a father-son domestic there. Upon investigation, it was determined that the son was running out of felony warrants here in the Port County and also in the state of Michigan. He was taken into custody at that particular time. Then on August 5th, Dufy Toby Batcock documented a similar matter between the homeowner and the roofing contractor here in the town of Michigan Shores and 300 block of Bouquetian Drive. Additional follow-up was required, where Dufy Batcock was able to contact, the contractor was able to resolve that matter. Aside from that, I have no other major things to pass on. What's your thing, question?
Just thank you again.
On behalf of the whole town, thank you for the quick response, and we appreciate it and.
Again, like I said, the fire department was very responsive. They were on scene very quickly. In fact, Chief Sokowski observed us coming by the fire cops here, and immediately knew something was wrong, and, you know, within minutes was down there with us, working the scene and that, and was an integral part of the response as well. So although retired, he never leaves them. He's still working very active, and actually, as you know, he still remains as a part-time deputy.
He still moves, okay?
He does. Looking at a different placement, maybe a couple of needs, other than that.
Thank you so much, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next report is fire department. Please, Bob.
Before I get to fire department, I want Mark fail to tell you that he was the officer that responded from the first officer on scene, who, well, part of a while, took care of the whole situation handling very professionally, and I think he should be commended for his action.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
General meetings, we had on the 3rd, county business meeting, 17th, building maintenance, 24th, building maintenance, and the 31st was a general meeting. A lot of that was cleaning up the building, the inside for the anniversary party on the 75th. A lot of that was cleaning up the building, the inside for the anniversary party on the 75th. Calls for attention on the 3rd at 10:50 p.m., Ohio Drive for surviving town. And 6th at 9:00 or 7:30 p.m., Meadow Trail Drill and Fire. 6th at 8 o'clock at night, stop 32 medical call. And 7th, Suburban Drive for a structure fire, which was a fatal structure fire. Home fire, dead man, there were some, I'm sorry, things that fire caused. I mean, 7th, Rosemont, yeah, structure fire, water reach. 8, 7, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, Land Shore Drive for a CO detector. On the 8th, Hillside Drive, lying down. And 12, quarter to 2 in the afternoon, you have 12 medical call. On the 11th, 11:16, Highway 11 Drive for a medical call. On the 14th, Pachetran Drive for a medical call. On the 16th, Cherokee Trail for a medical call. 17th, again, Highway US 35 for a vehicle in rush fire, assistance for a few. On the 21st, Michiana Drive for a medical call. On the 23rd, Los Alamos Trail medical call. On the 26th, Alabama Call on Metro Park Trail, view of the beach. 27th, Fisher Drive for fire alarm. 28th, Eastport for a medical call. And on the 30th, for NI Trail for medical call. Been a very busy month for the Fire Department. Just a reminder, October 9th is our pancake breakfast.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, Chief. And then as Chief Wistec said, you know, come into the Fire Department, we thank the Fire Department as well for the work you did, you know, on September 1st. So we thank you very much. Okay, Building Commissioner, foreperson Officer Deb Chubb.
So I emailed a report, you have provided a case of reports, and so, you know, listing of the permits that have been approved, principal time of the meeting, I'm going to advise the Plan Commission meeting and approve the plans for swimming pool, 3801. Still have some unresolved staff reporters. 3601 Land Shore Drive, we have a short date set for that.
It's on.
3621, there's just been no activity, a gentleman has no account. So, kind of, we won't go on that one. One other report, contractor had gotten a DNR authorization for the driveway replacement, of course, after we did it, I mean, agreed, but it looks like they expanded the driveway and not just replaced what was there, so we'll have to decide, need to go forward. Required him to get another huddle from DNR. Staff reporters issued that 3/20, Brookside, meeting without permit, returned $20 fine. 3925, Iwata Building without permit, $500 fine, hopefully been paid, as I understand. Let's see, oh yeah, short-term Michael permit applications that will probably be submitted before the end of September. So it will be on the BZA agenda for the October 27th meeting.
So it will submit those before the 9th?
Right.
And you came up here.
The deadline, so I suspect those will be finished and submitted before the monitoring starts.
I think he has to have them in before the end of September, correct?
He wouldn't have any, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, any questions? No?
I like the one page, thank you.
Okay. Nothing to report from the flood plan administrator except for the two, well, no, you reported on the one, the one house at 1030 Portal, needed to get a DNR authorization in advance of doing any of the work, even replacing their driveway because they're in the complete floodway. 3820 also had to reach out to the DNR to get a DNR authorization and permit to work because they are number one in the floodway, and they're also on a very small lot. So they needed to get some information, and as Ray did get, you know, letters from the DNR today, I believe yesterday or today, those letters came through to him. And, but there were some questions raised because I think each of those people sort of misrepresented all the work they had done to the DNR. So I think they don't realize that copies of these letters go out to other people as well, not just to them, so. And then you could find out what was taking place. But anyway, those are the two things that Ray handled. Dolly Mallett, Park Board?
For the park, probably, we have nothing to report, but I do want to tell you that Joan, what's her name?
Jean.
Jean, yeah. She gave me seven, she gave me a report that there was about 7,000, and I wrote a check for 1,000 for the Fire Department.
Yes, great, okay, thank you. All right, Road Commissioner, Bob Sokowski. Now, as I introduced Bob, I want to remind you, I did send forward the estimates that Bob got on, you know, for those, for the tree removal, did you get that too, Joan? Or no? Okay. Yeah, I'll show, you're there. Because I'm clean. You can have that, and then here's the other two. Okay, here's one, it's one, but Maple City, here we go. So there are two estimates.
I'm looking now.
Now, Bob, can you explain, please, give us your report and please explain about the trees.
The only thing I did for the month is mowing a couple of trees removed from the street. Most of the time I'm busy running around getting stuff for the park.
Okay.
Guy made a call me about Mrs. Fundow on Dreamwall, thanks 301 Dreamwall called, there's a dead oak tree that's somewhat close to her house, that's on virtual, but it's unincorporated virtually. So I wanted to go between the Dreamwall and the fire line. It's never been approved, and that tree is riding, and she's afraid it's going to fall on her house. That was the one supposedly, the other ones are for the tree that could fall on the town hall on the east, on the town drive on the east side. And there's four of them that are growing in the roof and on the Port side. They were saplings in the building, put up there. They didn't come out of there.
Okay. So you see the estimates?
Yes, and this is just because I haven't been here as long as some people, but, Bob, the one that's close to 301 Dreamwall, in the back of my mind, I thought the town gave that land to the properties on either side some time ago.
It never went through.
Okay, so, that I read is partial, okay, good.
I don't know what held it up. I thought at one time they owned 301 Dreamwall, did not want the piece of property. I don't know that ever changed.
Okay, thank you.
That was set aside for a road at one time through to the town.
Right, yeah. So I have no further questions.
Okay, so.
But why are we, does Dun, I mean, the tree he's talking about is on that piece of property?
Yes. Oh, is it a dead? The one that is on that undeveloped or unpaved bursch wood section is?
It's not incorporated because it does belong to the town.
Well, then it's just an unpaid, unincorporated, maybe the wrong word, it does belong to the town.
I just wanted to get something straight, because we.
Okay. Yes.
This is just to cut it down, the sum remains, that's what you, the quote means, sure.
Okay.
And where are the two more of the trees?
By the garage?
On the east side of the town road.
Okay, so we really, really have six trees around the garage, that is what you're?
Four on the Port side and two dead.
And a four trees on the other side, right?
Yep.
Okay, okay, and there's two estimates, so which of the estimates, I gave it to Joan I'll look at, so. Is there a major difference on there or no?
A few hundred bucks.
Okay. Because there's two from him, I sent two out.
Maple City is.
Okay, Maple City has two of them. Maple City has two sums, and then the other have only one total, I believe, right? You told me, I want to.
145, and one in, and the both have 45 for the garage.
All right, the difference is very.
250, it's 3,400 on the other one.
Right. The sums are very close, so I don't know, Bob, if you have a recommendation of which one to use yourself, a preference for?
I've used Maple City before. John Street Service was out here, they were supposed to cut that tree, that's why I asked one of them.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, we need to choose on one of the, one of those estimates, so.
So did you give us an answer who you prefer?
I didn't say.
But they're cheaper on one.
They're cheaper.
Yeah, they're cheaper on one, the other one they're the same.
Okay, all right, so let's, I need a motion.
I can motion to approve Maple City as a vendor.
Okay, Ralph Fox?
I'll say.
All right, Ralph Fox, move to accept Maple City's quote for removal of the trees. Michael Martinez seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rich?
I don't think you know what you're talking about. I don't have any table.
You what, oh. Can you pass, does anyone have a table? Well, we can show you the estimates over here.
How do you get them before meeting?
This is my fault, because I thought that I had sent those out, I did not. Oops. I said that, that was my fault, I didn't send that.
Do you want a temporary table list, and Rich has a chance to redo it?
Yeah, let's, we can, you know, give Rich just a minute or two and then we'll keep moving on. Because Bob explained which trees they are.
Did you understand which trees they are, Rich?
I understand where they are.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Ralph, okay, then while Rich is just looking at that, let's take, you know, Ralph's suggestion, we'll hold the vote, just the vote will be held for a moment then. Ralph, do you have anything from the Advisory Plan Commission?
No, as Deb said, we approved the rule of 3801. And the group continues to work on the updated conference of plan. We're making slow but steady progress. The overall goal is to have something either done or available for public comment by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. All right, there was no BZA report from Matt Bowen, and Michiana Shores was not mentioned at the White Ditch meeting today, so that's good. And the homeowner, 3915, will have to go back to the Drainage Board, and he's waiting for confirmation from the DNR with regards to his plans on, you know, what, he wants to build his pool, but he has to talk to the DNR first, and then he has to go back to the Drainage Board, and he has to do his restitution before he does anything else. So he needs to go back to the Drainage Board, he came up with a very pretty plan of putting trees in, but they're all right next to the ditch. So he's got to come up with a better plan on that because the Drainage Board does not want everything right next to the ditch, so, anyway. 3915, Iowa, 50, 15, 3915. Okay, Rich, can we do the vote then? Does you, if you have questions?
How many are there?
Two on the east side, four are putting into the building on the Port.
Four, no, four are dead?
No. They're growing into the roof of the building.
And they'd be trimmed, but they have to be cut. You don't want the trees.
They're too close. There were saplings in the building.
Okay, so I would like to return back to that motion, Ralph moved. Michael Martinez seconded, approving the Maple City company to do the cutting down of the trees. I will ask for a vote again. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rich? Okay, so we have four ayes here. Thank you very much, okay, old business.
Maples for Maple City, right?
Maple City, yes.
Thank you. Do I have that bank?
Yes, they are. Okay, now, the, oh, old business, report on steps in the road grant application process. Our work was not completed, they, we made the agreement with them fairly late in the month, and they were not able to finish everything, so we're going to be submitting on the January call for the CCG grants. There was a call, there was an email that I got and Joan got, and that was with regards to the Laporte, not Laporte, well, it is, it's LTAP, with a Purdue extension that we will, you know, follow up on, making sure this Paser grant that we had gotten last year is still good for us to be using. On the next, I took a look at it online, but I will be calling in tomorrow to check with them, so, you know, to find out the next steps of exactly what we need to do for them. Beach Stop 37, do you have any news, Rich, from?
I forgot to, I volunteered to talk to the president, but I don't, I'll try to make sure I do.
Okay, I thought perhaps they may have reached out. I understand that they did address it at their meeting, and that they were going to, at their last meeting, and that they were going to approach, what is it, the, I guess, the Poké Fund or something like this for money. Mick, did you want to say something about that?
I was at the meeting, yes, they were going to approach Poké Fund for the meeting, and they were reaching out to have the engineering and architectural drawings pulled out. They were going to be somewhat like the rest of them. So hopefully with a real ladder phone. Yes, they were going to put a ladder phone in there, that was definitely brought up there because there wasn't nothing there, there was no park there at this time. So they were, they were going to do the whole night yard like they did for all the other stops. And they were getting the money from the Poké.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, great, okay. C, purchase of the additional notice board. Joan, were you able to put through the purchase of a third board?
Not yet, I sent an email to them at the beginning of the week when I returned from my sick.
Okay, all right.
And they have not answered me. They did send, I do have a catalog from them.
Okay.
But it's probably going to cost us as much for the board, is it, I mean, for transportation as a board.
Well, but we, okay, we do need to put it in.
I thought maybe we could find something with another company, but I haven't been able to find anything similar.
Well, we just do the same one that we have there, and then we may still purchase it if we can find from them above it that says Michiana Shores yet, so. Okay, so thank you very much, and you'll be following up on that then. The installation of the notice board, and Rich says you haven't been feeling well that there was no time to really work on the.
Today we took it over.
We noticed that, yeah, looks good without it.
Do we want to put the other one right back in the same spot?
You know what, we were going to do that before the, we're going to put the, we'll put the new one, probably. I don't know, we should talk to the Fire Department and see if they preferred one thing or another, on which side for us to put that on. But right now, because our celebration is over, perhaps we work on getting it in at the beach because we always post on the glass here, you know, for any notices that need to go.
My recommendation is to put it in at the beach.
Yeah.
And our third location, we brought along, would be here, as you said. So that that covers us until we get the third one in and install.
Yes. Okay, so let's move it back to putting it in at the beach. So is that something you can handle, Rich, or should we hire someone else to work on? I mean, is that okay, we can, what do you think, should, or we could reach out to someone else because the installation could also come from the ARPA funds?
We do.
Okay.
No sense paying for it. Again, I think I brought this up last time. Do we want it lower than like the one on the park, because we're smoking?
Well, you know, there are a lot of.
The thing we talked about is the way that that house looks city, there's no way that that sign, they're here, the sign is here, there's no way that it would block the view.
Yeah.
I just don't want, I just don't want it too short, people driving, and kind of like with all the grass.
Right. Yeah, this way the sign itself will just stick up above those beach grasses, I mean, it'll be.
I think that would be appropriate. The one down by the park is fine, because I would instead look at it, it's ready for the light for most people.
Here are the keys for the block left park, if you got to bring them.
Oh, excellent, we should make more copies than that, okay.
Looks good.
We need, we need to get keys, well, we will have to choose someone to post the news, but I think we need to make more than just two keys, one more set of keys to do this. I will go to Ace and bring them back, is that okay, Joan?
Okay.
All right. Ralph?
I think we need to, whosoever's going to be responsible for, we need a copy of what we post and a date it's posted, so I can stick it in our files for confirmation that it's been posted.
Okay. Okay.
I understand?
Yes.
Right at the bottom, the date you posted, when it's done, okay, give me a copy or give me a copy. You know, once you take it off, give me a copy.
What I was gonna say, Diana, the other board may have to say the exact keys.
Oh, maybe so.
Before you...
Oh, wait, hold on, before we do anything, okay.
Yeah.
These keys, fifty-two we have?
That's for the one by the park.
Oh, yes, one, yeah, this is just the one, so, all right, that'll be a good idea, try to check those out, so.
And Bob?
Okay.
We put the old sign on that side of the truck against that table. Mike suggested that you might be able to put it in the truck and, you know, dump it somewhere.
In the appropriate place.
I'm moving out of the outside of the building. I had to say to the... Who put the sign in there? Who put the sign in?
In the garage.
My brother Matt. Why?
You'll see.
All right, thank you very much, okay. Um, the last one is the installation of a mail drop box for the building commissioner, code enforcement officer on the building and the purchase of those additional supplies. I'm assuming that, Deb, you were speaking with Joan about the purchases that you needed?
Yes, I've heard anything about it.
Nothing yet, well, I mean, you two have to...
I need to know what kind of hard drive, I need to know the, uh...
Okay.
Character just...
Yes, so Deb, you've talked to Joan about that, okay?
What about the vests? Sometimes you can get those vests for nothing from safety people like them.
Oh, I don't know, I actually, pardon my... Additional safety vests, you have them hanging around somewhere? If not, okay. They, that store that used to be Big R, I forgot what the name of it, RNA or whatever, they do have them. I will look there because the, like the farm supply store at, in Michigan City. So, um, we can check over there to see how much those are.
There's actually a vest store.
Uh, one for Deb to wear as she's walking around. So she doesn't get shot by somebody as she's approaching. I mean, tch, tch. When she is out doing her, you know, legitimate business, you know, walking around in the town, so, um, anyway. Um, just so people would see her, I think that that would, would help. Okay, so you will handle that? Yes, something like those, uh-huh, they're not expensive, anyway, so. Um, and then your, uh, file cabinets, did you get that moved over already? Deb, the file cabinet, did you arrange?
No, I think Joan was still diagramming something with it there. No, it's ready, I'm just waiting for it.
Ralph, I'm here to help you, okay?
Yes, didn't have that... There's a, it's over there. Yeah, we're writing it down, it's sitting there, it's empty, it's gray, it's been there for two months now.
All right, okay. Thank you, Joan, so now figure out how Ralph said that he can help carry, get it over your place, okay?
Well, at one of the meetings he was gonna get it over there, I just listened to one of the meetings.
I just need somebody to say...
All right. Joan, then we're gonna leave that for them. We don't need to discuss this anymore, that will be Deb and Ralph to figure it out.
And, and I can get you in there and I can show you exactly where to hang it.
Hey Deb, I just ordered that vest, it'll be here two days, so I'll email you and then we can, I'll drop off to your house.
All right, thank you, Michael. Okay, um, all right, now, there's an issue under New Business and that is moving the stop sign in front of thirty-six twenty-seven. The residents have asked us to do that and, um, a couple of times. And, um, Deb has gone over and taken a look at it. The residents are complying with the requirement that they park only, they're a little parking over there on the Powhatan side because otherwise they're on their subject system. So they are doing what they're supposed to do and, uh, but still, uh, we think that when people are parking there, where the parking, where the stop sign is, people may not see that stop sign. And that's sort of a heavy duty corner because people come out complying down. I know they stop when they see the blinking sign that measures, but you know, when that sign isn't out there, people move a little faster. So, um, is there any big issue, road commissioner, with moving that sign a little farther to the east?
I'll have to look at it because there's a telephone pole there.
Uh-huh.
I can't put it behind the telephone.
Right, uh-huh, okay. Well, if you can give us your opinion on that then, okay? Thank you very much.
Can we talk about that sign?
Excuse me, I'm sorry?
Can we talk about this sign in front of the, the stop sign? Public comment?
The sign, no, that'll be given the public comment later on, he's just gonna look into it, we're not working on it yet. But when public comment comes up. Um, attorney report, is there anything from you, Mr. Nansky?
Nothing really new that has an argument to cover. There was a good correspondence from Anthony Novak, very good repair, and I referred that to my partner Doug who's gonna be working on a school project, Espera, I don't know if they've connected or not.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, excellent, thank you very much. Um, all right, now, uh, Ms. Lane's business, there are some recordings on AIM, that's advancing in the municipalities, that are available for purchase. That might be, you know, of interest and value to various members on, you know, the town council. Some having to do actually with the budgeting process, some having to do with just the, um, uh, actual activities and fluid workings of a town council. So, um, these recordings are twenty-five dollars each and as long as we purchase it once, where everybody could share in it and watch them, you know, and listen to them. So I just wanted to bring that up. You can always check on the AIM website as well to see if there are some things that may be of interest. So, I mean, there are several that I thought were pretty good and, um, I don't have the names, I didn't bring those with me. I jotted that down, but that's in my notebook at home. So, um, that I think would be good, they're twenty-five dollars each, I don't know what your thoughts are on doing something like this.
We repurchased one and then...
Any of us can access it, yeah.
Any of us can watch it.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. To log on to it, so, and you know, I think...
How would we purchase them?
Well, that would have to go probably through, we can either charge it, we can charge it on a credit card, you know, perhaps using the town's card, or we can pay for it by check. I don't know, it would be easiest to hear.
All you have to do is tell me which ones you want, I can order them by charge card.
Okay, excellent, all right, so...
Just let me know which ones you want.
Okay.
You can also attend some of its pieces if you want them.
Yeah.
I've been letting the council know the ones that, that come through me.
Right. Now, some of these are from earlier though too, and some of them, you know, they've got a newer one that's on the electronic meetings, um, and stuff. So I think that it would be valuable to take a look at them. So they were, I picked out four and I don't remember if I jotted, sent those, I think I may have sent those in an email to you guys. You know, the ones that I was looking at, but, um, and I'm not sure whether I included Joan on that email or not, but we will send that through then because I did make some notes on it. Uh, but that's something for us to do and, you know, going forward, I think it would be worthwhile. Uh, then, uh, regarding the pizza party, I have connected with, um, the Villanova Pizzeria. Uh, they are out of New Buffalo, but their pizza's pretty good and, uh, as pizzas go. And, uh, they can deliver us, so they can deliver it to the town and stuff like this, I just need to know how many people we're gonna actually have, you know, attending at that time. Um, I'm making appetizers, Jean is gonna make some salads, I think, and some desserts and whatever. And I, on behalf of the town, that will order the pizza and the soda, the soda will probably come from a grocery store. Um, Joan, what is the best way for us to, uh, be able to pay for that pizza and for the soda?
The best way?
Uh-huh.
Well, one, I need to have a W nine from the pizza place and that, so I don't have to deduct twenty percent of what we pay.
Okay.
Uh, as far as the soda, whatever you wanna call it.
Yes.
Your drinks, I'm sure you're gonna include water. That can also be purchased underneath the credit card.
Okay, would they have to contact you then for the credit card? Would be the best, okay, contact Joan, okay. All right, so it's like go to Al's and have them call you to get the credit card number when we're getting those things, correct? Like the soda and water?
I don't know if Al's would accept it that way.
Okay, so then who do you recommend, who does?
Well, I don't know anyone who does, uh, when it comes to the grocery items.
Okay. Would it be acceptable if, like, I just purchased them and submitted a receipt?
Yeah, you can do that. Don't like to do it very often, but...
Okay, and then with regards to the pizza, if I use our, we need that W nine, what, if we use our...
You're gonna do your credit card.
No, no, but I'm saying what if we did, uh, with them, used our tax exempt number for the town?
Well, you probably can use the tax exempt number.
Okay, because that might come out better than them submitting, giving me that, they might say, forget your pizza, get it somewhere else. But I'll check, okay. All right, thank you, Joan.
You're making, uh, start to do pizza?
No, they don't do pizza, we're going for...
Too bad, I got everything on them.
Pizzeria, pizzeria, they're a real pizzeria, so anyway. Um, any communications received? Outside of emails, you know, asking some questions about, you know, contractors and other kind of things? I haven't received, you know, many other kind of things.
I'm trying to do everything I get in the office immediately out to the council, so.
Okay, thank you.
And Rich drives me nuts because I have to make a copy for him for everything. And my computer, my copy machine that's hooking up is getting a little bit lazy. It takes me forever to get some things printed. So we may have to be more around that new copy machine.
Or we may have to have bent Rich's arms and get him online. So, okay.
I still need a new copy machine.
Okay. Whether he does anything or not, okay. Okay, uh, let's move on to, okay, then thank you, Joan, public comment? Mick, you wanted to say something?
The stop sign over there in front of Mr. Crocker is at, uh, maybe thirty-six twenty-seven. The chief, please convince her how far it is that she can park for the stop sign. He seems to be parking directly in front of the view of the stop sign. We originally asked council to come up and ask him, what is his parking plan over there? Because he seems to be parking anywhere he feels like, across the street on the mayor's parking area. And the two cars in front of, not even the top of the permit for parking. And this was asked to the council way back when and it's still, we're having parking issues over there. We can't be moving stop signs because he's got a permit card and he doesn't have a permit for it.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what permit for a car does anybody need?
It's just public comments.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, you're right, yeah, okay.
Needs a permit.
I was asking, thank you.
For the parking.
I was just checking with Joan actually, in case she had a permit that I didn't realize she had.
The only thing I know about permits for parking is if someone is handicapped and they won't need a handicap.
Okay, well, then that's it, but thank you very...
Anybody, that's all I know.
Okay, okay, thank, well, but thank you, Mick. Any other public comments?
What's the pizza party?
September twenty-ninth, for the committee, for the committee that organized the, uh, bathrooms.
I'm happy for tonight.
I was not specific.
It's gluten dear.
Yeah, it's to, it's to thank those guys who worked basically all year putting together the picnic and the, and the dinners. They did a really nice job, they did an awesome job and actually, if I make my comment, I'm gonna say something. Now, um, council...
Can I ask about the question about that? If we have money left over from what's been donated, why don't we just do the pizza party out?
We can.
Then it wouldn't be any problems with me.
All right, well, that's a good suggestion, okay, here we go.
Guys won't like me making problems, all right?
Okay. Well, this is, thank you very much, Joan, okay? Um, okay, council comments, gentlemen? No comments? Rich, do you have any comment to make? Oh, Deb, you wanted to say something?
Just a reminder, we talked about putting in a box that, um...
Yes, I never got back to it, you're right, okay. Uh, Chief Bundick said that there's no problem, it's okay to do, but he did say that the fire department was discussing putting new siding on that side of the building? To do something with siding and he said we may just have to wait until they actually put that in? Because they're talking about doing it this fall?
I don't know.
Okay.
This is me borrowing, I'll ask him.
Okay, all right, because he did mention that, okay? All right, okay, so, so that's an answer, does that help? Okay, all right, so council comment, nobody else has it? Rich, anything for you? You mind if I say something? Okay, well, I wanna make some, make a comment and I'm gonna make this comment to, uh, you know, so that everybody who's not here could hear it as well. The committee that was run by basically Jean Paxton with the super support of her husband Sam, did an outstanding job putting together the summertime picnic and the family fun fest and the dinner. We've had so many comments from people, you know, out on the streets. I get comments from people who are from Michigan, the village of Michiana, because they see me, they know me when I'm walking down the street and they say, we heard what a great party it was, we heard what a great picnic it was, you know, congratulations that everything went so well and all. So it's just due to people who are willing to pitch in. So she grabbed some people, we have the regulars here who work all the time, but they roped in people who don't usually do things to help out and it's been absolutely wonderful. They did a great job and that's why we will thank all of them and, uh, I'm not going to, I actually didn't bring the list with me, but I do have a list of people. So we will publish that when we put out a newsletter so people know and an email to thank everybody for it. But thank you very, very much to the entire planning committee for the seventy-fifth anniversary. I think our celebrations went very well, so, uh, I think someone mentioned that for the one hundred year, you know, and people get, get started planning now for something to do for, for going forward. But people did ask, you know, we've already had comments come in and asking, is there going to be something next year? Are you gonna do a party, are you gonna do a picnic or something like this? So hopefully we have, we can get a little bit more excitement from the people who live here, you know, moving along. So that's it for me. Um, I am going to ask for motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, everybody at once, okay. All right, thank you very much, this meeting is adjourned. It is my turn, I thank you very much, everyone for coming.